I think we can get ready, can't we? Everybody doesn't want to state.
Oh, no. We are going to be motivated.
Okay, let's see if it's going to let us. Good evening. I'd like to call to order tonight the meeting of the Pecoson Planning Commission for Thursday, February the 20th. And I would ask that anyone that wishes to join in invocation, I will say the Lord's Prayer at this time, and it will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. We ask you to join us if you so feel like you'd like to do so, and thank you. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, as are our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. But deliver us from evil, for mine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to our flag. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Thank you. And I guess we can go ahead, and before we do though, I think I'd like to say that we have a new member before we go ahead. Anyone at home that will see someone new sitting up here with us tonight. And I'm going to let you introduce yourself. I haven't met you. I think some of the people have, and tell us just a little something about you so we'll know.
My name's Tom Stevens, and I live in Pecoson on Edwards Road on that way, and been here, bought a house, and actually on, what was it, February 29th in 2008, so the house is only three years old. But I've been here about 12 years. But I've been down here even when Isabel was here, helping my friends and neighbors for about 40 years. Live here with Pecoson.
Wonderful. Well, we're real glad you're here, and I hope you enjoy serving the community in this way. It is a nice thing to do, and I hope you'll enjoy it.
Correct.
Okay. If we can do anything to help, you let us know, but I'm sure you'll jump right in. The first item for approval on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. And we had a work session on January 23rd. Does anyone like to make a motion to accept that work session minutes?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Okay, Karen.
Okay. Commissioner Stevens? You can vote if you like, you just can't make a motion since you weren't at.
Right.
Vote to approve or you can abstain.
Okay. Approve. I've read them.
Commissioner Gribble? Commissioner Fenixson?
Aye.
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber?
Aye.
Motion was carried by a vote of five to zero.
Okay, and then also we have the regular session, which took place also on January 23rd, 2020. Do we have a motion to accept those minutes as written?
I move to accept the regular session minutes as written.
Second.
Emmett?
Aye.
Commissioner Fenixson?
Aye.
Commissioner Gribble?
Aye.
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber?
Aye.
That motion was carried by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. We have an audience for visitors, and this is a time when anyone who wishes to address the Planning Commission with something other than the public hearing, which we don't have any tonight, so it would just be anything in general. And it's easy for me to see there's not going to be anybody that's going to come forward to address us, so I'm going to open it, and I'm going to quickly close it, and we'll move on to old business on our agenda, which is amendments to the city code pertaining to Chapter 6, Article 4, signs in the public right of way. We've kind of been over this. We've had a work session, which we came up with some suggestions and ideas, and the planning department looks like to me they have made some my observations about what we did, and...
Yes, we don't have any presentation for tonight, but I can kind of run through what our fighting for. Okay?
All right, that'd be great, Danan.
All right. So at the last meeting, the Planning Commission voted to table consideration of our amendments to Chapter 6 of the city code regarding signs in the public right of way. And they asked us to look at two specific things, two possible amendments to the language. One would be an allowance for smaller signs erected for less than a day in the city right of way, and another would be some kind of limitation on number of signs per permit or a limitation on the distance between certain signs in order to reduce clutter for events such as elections. So we went through, and we discussed the language. We brought it to the zoning administrator, and we looked at a number of different sign ordinances for at least a dozen other localities, including our neighbors, and also localities in other states. And so we've come to a number of conclusions. One of which is that amending the current language to add something that would address either of these points would be very difficult. Adding an exception for small signs would make this sign ordinance effectively unenforceable. Our enforcement is at most on a weekly basis, and thus we would have no measure to distinguish temporary signs that are up for or less than a day. We wouldn't have any recall to do that. And a limitation on the amount of signs per permit is a regulatory burden that may not address the problem, and adding a distance limit between signs would also become very, very difficult to enforce, and may even potentially pose a hazard to freedom of speech, or were we to get into different people's sign permits, having to respect those distances. Furthermore, we've looked at all a number of sign ordinances, and we could not find any language that addresses similar points to this. In fact, a number of the localities we looked at, including Newbury News and York County, they do not allow signs in the right of way at all. Now, there is some language that we've seen for prohibiting signs in the right of way along certain roads. We already have that as the prohibition at intersections within 200 feet. However, we did not have any real guidance or suggestions on whether or not we would want to include further roads, so we've left it at the intersections. And finally, I guess we would like to remind the Planning Commission that the original purpose of this ordinance amendment was to bring the current city code up in line with city practices with any guidance from Planning Commission and City Council. Our current practice has been to effectively ignore this part of our code and instead defer to Appendix D. We no longer can do that because of guidance from our zoning administrator and from council to enforce sections of this code, specifically the ban on signs at intersections. So we need to amend this language if we are to do nothing else than continue our current practices for approving signs. And if you look at the language that we've included, the language that we are amending is actually significantly stricter than our current practices. It would say we only have signs up for a maximum of 48 hours. It says that we would only have signs smaller than four square feet. It would mean that a number of community signs and other signs that we allow per practice would basically be illegal. So there really is an imperative to amend this language. But based on what we've said, we have included no new changes to the proposed amendment to Chapter 6. We have reprinted the ordinance as it was presented last January, and we are asking for your approval or for your guidance on whether or not you think this is suspicious.
All right, thank you, Danan. Okay, we had a lot of our last meeting. Prepared to make a motion to accept this? Make a vote on it tonight?
I read the resolution, and it's pretty specific as to what we're doing here with the right of way, where they can put signs on what road, the distance, none on the concrete and stuff like that. The four by four, no more than three feet high. They covered all the bases from what I can see. I agree, you can't limit the number of signs. They're going to put them up anyway, you know. So I like it. I like the way they do it.
I would like to know how the general public is able to ascertain the public right of way, where the public right of way is and is not. I think that's a very undefined area, particularly, again, I'll go back to directional signs and signs that are being used for less than 24 hours. I think that we're penalizing these folks trying to correct something else, and we're penalizing others while doing this. And I think that not knowing exactly where the public right of ways are, I could put a sign there and think I'm in a public right of way or outside of the public right of way and maybe not be. So I don't know, is the public right of way the same across the board? Is it 10 feet across the board, six feet across the board? How does the public know where it is?
It varies, but we will take a permit for each sign that's allowed in the right of way. As part of that permit process, we will have to...
I want to put a sign on the outside of the right of way without having to have a permit, correct?
On personal property, you would be subject to the regulations of Appendix D.
Subject to what?
The regulations of Appendix D, which covers signs.
And that is...
Which you're allowed to have a realto sign on.
So you're saying any kind of sign in the public right of way will require a permit? Is that what I'm hearing?
Unless it's a highway VDOT regulatory sign. That'd file community activities.
Community activities as defined how?
Let me stay within the spirit of what we're doing here. We're not... Anything could be advertised on there, but it should be for a city purpose because it's a city sign. That's basically what we're talking about. This amendment would actually make the sign that council has approved to go across the street, the illuminated, would actually help to make that legal because it becomes a sign not requiring a permit at that point. Under our current code, it's... Under our current code, we're allowing a lot of things we shouldn't.
I understand what you're saying here, but again, I go back to just a directional sign. If I wanted to put a directional sign out for an open house, for a party, for whatever the case may be, do I have to have a permit for that sign? That's what... Yes or no?
You wouldn't be able to put it within 200 feet of the right of way.
So I would need a permit to put a directional arrow in the right of way, and it cannot be within 200 feet of the intersection. Is that correct? I just can't support that.
It is difficult to determine what the right of way is, and that is why the majority of localities, including a number of the ones we looked at, don't allow any signs to be permitted in the right of way. That does not prevent people from putting them up, but it means simply that no permit can be issued for those signs.
And remember, we heard from Mr. Kinsey at the last meeting that York County just took his sign. That's how they dealt with that.
So the permitting process would be, I would come to, I needed, wanted to have a sign and for it permitted, I would come to the community development office, and someone would give you $50 for a deposit, and then $5 for the sign to be up at least 30 days before the event, and then I have seven days to remove it. If I don't remove it within seven days, then I forfeit. But the initial transaction, when I come to the office, at that time, am I seeing a staff member who will say to me, where are you going to put this sign? And if so, directing me to where the right of way will be so that I will be, you know...
Yes.
Okay.
If there's any doubt, we'll find out exactly where the right of way is in that particular place.
Guidance we usually give is somewhere between four from seven feet from the curb. It's usually pretty easy to determine because most people put their signs up around Shipperick Island or along with Creek Road and Victory, and those we know are about seven feet. Usually, you put them up in the grassy section between the curb and the sidewalk. That's the right of way. But we do have a list, if people wanted to get more specific, of the widths of right of ways in the city that we could consult.
So am I to understand that on a weekly basis, someone goes out and places all the signs to determine when they were taken and whether or not they're at a seven-day period? Because I would think that would have to be done almost on a daily basis, because if I get a sign today, Lee gets one tomorrow, and Angie gets one the next day, and Bonnie gets one the next day, you know, and they're all going to be coming down in seven days. Who's policing those dates of time that those signs are taken out? How is that done?
Our enforcement is usually complaint generated at the most. We've been asked at certain times of the year by zoning administrator to go out on a weekly basis and police the intersections, so within 100 or 200 feet of the intersection, take down any signs that you see, and that is done at most on a weekly basis.
I would say weekly would be a good spot on that.
Let me ask another question, and I think it might address Libby's concern. How did yard sales sign a... That is sort of an exception, isn't it? And I'm just trying to go for consistency, but we've got an exception with yard sales. So could the, you know, some exception also be used for these directional signs?
It's interesting because the current language for Chapter 6 seems to have been written for yard sales in mind. And that is why the beginning of Chapter 6 talks about political signs, and then it defers to signs in the public right of way, which would probably be considered stuff like these small temporary signs. The reason we're doing away with those separations is because we don't want to regulate content, and thus we don't want to specify what a political sign is. But temporary signs would be subject to something similar as the original language of Chapter 6. So smaller than four square feet, 48 hours, permit proceedings. Unfortunately, we've deviated from that language in the past 20 or so years and imposed a number of regulations. Yard sale sign permits that we have been telling people to follow that are not strictly in the code, that are more like guidelines. And that's another thing that we're trying to get away with, do away with, is that kind of ad hoc enforcement of yard sale signs.
So that's been eliminated?
So yard sale signs will come under this signage as well? So they will have to be permitted? They cannot be within a right of way? They have to be 200 feet from an intersection?
They will be permitted in the right of way with one of these permits, yes, but they will have to be out of the intersection, and they will have to use...
Out of the intersection 200 feet?
Yes.
But they can be permitted to be in the right of way?
Yes.
And so why are we allowing that but not the other small temporary signages that are there for less than 24 hours? It just seems to me, and I'm not going to belabor this point, take my last statement to this, but it seems to me that we are so intent on regulating the results of all the political signage that has occurred, because that's what's really brought this all about, that in doing that, we are so limiting the ability for people to use signs for purposes that are very untemporary in nature and have a specific purpose and being removed. And I just don't agree with penalizing everyone because we're trying to resolve a political sign issue, and that's what it all boils down to.
It is difficult because of this content regulation thing. We are trying to simplify it as much as possible, and it means we have to subject someone who comes in with 100 signs for a candidate and someone who comes in with a single yard sale sign to the same regulations. We've tried to smooth that out as much as possible by waiving the deposit for yard sale signs and allowing them in the right of way with the same regulations outside of that deposit. They are allowed to be placed in the right of way, and they will continue to be allowed along with any other sign, excepting those intersections.
So can I ask you, why? Are they being exempted from everything else, the yard sale signs? Seems to me if we're going to do one, why would we discriminate for yard sales? Why wouldn't you just have a blanket policy across the board, you're either permitted within it or not?
Well, that's what this is. This is the same policy applied to every sign. The only thing that makes yard sales different is they don't have to pay a $50 deposit to put up a yard sale sign, and they are permitted to use those pre-formatted, page-sized yard sale signs. That is an artifact of a decision that was made many years ago when there were considered to be too many yard sale signs, and so we have a stock of pre-formatted yard sale signs. We've included that in the current language based on prior practice.
I'm trying to get clear. Kind of thinking about is if, say for instance, if I'm going to have, let's say, a wedding reception party, and I'm going to put a sign out, now, would they have to make the $50 deposit? They'd be exempted? I mean, I'm kind of thinking, you know, that's all, probably do it for one day.
All signs in the right of way are temporary.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Wally. I'm sorry.
All signs within the right of way are temporary, the ones that we're permitting. We're extending the time period from 48 hours to 30 days. I don't think that the example that Ms. Schreiber mentioned would qualify as a garage or yard sale.
But they would have to do, I mean, I'm kind of...
They would have to pay a $50 fee for the sign.
They would have to pay a $50 fee, but what incentive is there for people to move their garage signs then? Because I mean, it's not uncommon to see a garage sale sign up for, through the next weekend.
They'd be more likely, the wedding.
They're more likely, yeah.
More wedding.
To leave the sign up than somebody that's trying to do a directional to an event.
Yeah, it does kind of seem to be a little bit of a...
The other reason they are accepted is because they are granted a maximum of two of those pre-formatted signs per permit. So if someone is having a yard sale, they pay $5, they get two signs, and they can put them up, and we ask that they take them down, but they could conceivably put them up.
But yeah, we're not going to do that for anyone else other than yard sales.
Right, because this is written to try and tackle persons who come in with 50 signs. The $50 deposit is to try and compel them to take their own signs down.
I mean, I understand how this is all, why it came about, but I just don't agree with the way it's being, would be implemented merely to correct that issue and then create other issues at hand.
It's kind of a little bit of a...
Well, maybe a better way to go about explaining this ordinance is let's talk about what happens if this ordinance is not adopted. I will never, I will not allow any signs over four square feet for any reason anywhere in the right of way. We've already got 100 feet that we sort of administratively impose, already impose, which 100 feet, and that's certainly something the Planning Commission could do. They could say 100 feet's enough, 100 feet's enough. But I have been issuing a lot of permits for a lot of frankly nonprofit organizations primarily, based on prior practice of allowing these signs, when the ordinance doesn't allow us to. After this scrubbing, I think that if we don't adopt something new, I think we're going to have to start imposing the regulations of the current Chapter 6 that's on the books. Not only that, but I think a very important thing is that we're talking about removing unpermitted signs and notices at a hearing. From now on, when we remove these signs, which we can anticipate a fair amount of signs, we're going to have to go through actual notification to the owner if we can find out who it is, and tell them that we've got their sign, and they have a certain number of days to pick it up. We'll hold it, and then we'll trash it. Then if they think that we've taken the sign away illegally, they can actually appeal our decision. So it really, it creates a lot more potential paperwork in the processing, but I mean, if that's what it ends up being, that's what it ends up being. Either way, we have got to come up with an ordinance at the end of this that either reflects our current practice or addresses all the problems, and there are myriad, and Mr. O'Connell's gone through those, with our current ordinance. I don't know that we have a magic bullet that's going to address every single problem. I really don't.
How about Mr. Kinsey? When he was here, he mentioned the civic organizations, like he was talking about Kiwanis or something like that. Currently, they do get a sign. I kind of understood him to say they don't pay.
Mr. Kinsey did get a signed permit for Kiwanis event shortly after our last meeting.
Oh, okay.
Now, I approved it based on prior practice. I don't know if it was less than four square feet or not. I would tend to say not, because four square feet is not a big sign. feet or not. I would tend to say not, because four square feet is not a big sign. I mean, it's two by two. About two feet, it's actually smaller than a real estate sign, but it's pretty small. So, but I mean, that's what we'll end up having to enforce. We're trying to make some, this is actually more liberal, I would argue, than what our current ordinance is. What makes it tricky is the fact that we've never really applied Chapter Six where it ought to be applied. And it's not just, I mean, it's for political signs, certainly. But you're going to have political signs as long as you allow signs in the right-of-way. City Council told us at the work session, they wanted signs in the right-of-way. There are two stumbling blocks that they could not give me guidance on, was the distance from the right of, from the intersections and the size of the sign. That was their primary charge to the planning commission, is to come up with a situation that addressed sign size as well as the intersections. The intersections, we talked about it, well, we talked about it several, but we talked about two hundred feet, I think it's the time we talked about signs. We thought that addressing the sign size, a more logical way of doing that, rather than establishing, you can have sixteen square feet or whatever, would be to, because one of the big problems was how it would interfere with traffic. And that's, we said, well, if you set it back twenty feet, which is based on a standard for signage from VDOT, and in consultation with the engineering department, that's what we went with. And that way, we're a little more fluid. We can allow the fire department signs, which are far bigger than anything we would approve and much taller than anything we would approve. You know, and an ordinance, I mean, that thing was like almost twenty-eight square feet and it was nine feet tall. So, but, so what we said is that if you can put it twenty feet out, off the side of the road, not out of the right-of-way, off the side of the road, then you can have that sign. The only place, as Mr. O'Connell mentioned at the last time, the only place you're really going to be able to do that is going to be on Victory Boulevard. And it's no real surprise that most of the violations we see are on Victory Boulevard. So...
What about the Kiwanis barbecue sign, when they have their big barbecues, how would they be affected by that?
Well, if they're going to have a sign bigger than four square feet, they would have to move it twenty feet off the side of the road.
But then it can be any size after twenty feet?
Be any size after that theoretically. I mean, you know, typography and that sort of thing. But that's the only way we could get around, like, think about the fire department. I mean, that sign, that sign's huge. And we were trying to figure out a way to where we could theoretically allow that and still impose some sort of protections, you know, to ensure safety of the highway. So, that's where we are.
So, Wally, can I clarify, just so I get it right in my own head. So, the only difference under the proposed revision between yard sale signs and any other temporary event directional sign is the fifty-dollar deposit. All the other restrictions, well, yard sales are limited to the template, but all other signs, as far as placement goes, it's the same, stay out of the two hundred feet and stay in the right-of-way. The only other difference is the fifty-dollar deposits.
The fifty-dollar deposit and, of course, you have to advertise on that pre-slip, which is...
That's only for yard sale signs, so that you have to, but if you had a birthday party, then that can be, as long as it fits square footage requirements.
Smaller than four square feet.
Yeah, I mean, we're not going to regulate content on that either. We're seeing it's a temporary sign.
And then they have the deposit plus a five dollars and then they can get the fifty-dollar deposit back.
Back upon proper removal of the sign.
All right, we have any more discussion? Questions? Is anyone prepared to accept?
Based upon all the questions and answers, and I understand the, why we're doing this, I'd like to make a motion that we accept this.
Second. All right, Karen, call the roll.
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Gribble?
Aye.
Commissioner Fenixon?
Aye.
Commissioner Emmett?
Aye.
Chairwoman?
Aye.
That motion was carried by a vote of four to one.
Let's go to the city council, okay?
Thank you.
And now the final decision.
Take it from there.
Let's go in sometime in March.
Okay, well, that's old business. Wally, do you have anything that you would like to bring up?
Karen's got some copies of what our current ARB Architectural Review Board Boardment says. You remember, we talked a little bit at the last meeting about possibly changing that, the zoning administrator, that's not a recommendation y'all have to make. We're going to, because this month seemed to go just like that, we're going to actually have some language for you to look at. But I wanted you to know what it said now, so that you can kind of compare. We're also going to begin the process, a work session, along with this, we'll do a half-work session, plan unit development, we'll start looking at that as well. Hopefully, that will be a nice springboard for us to comprehend a lot of things in the zoning board that we could, that we could tackle. There's no shortage of things that we can look at.
So you're kind of thinking about that for March?
Yes, yes, for March. Mr. Moses's applications, which y'all heard last month, are actually going to city council on the twenty-fourth. I got to remember the topic and the saying, I'm sorry. On the twenty-fourth, so we'll know the disposition of applications by the end of that meeting. At last I...
Okay, so that's this coming Monday night.
This coming Monday. And I'm going to give a talk to the parks and rec people signage, or actually, I think it's the Exchange Club, it's one of those clubs. Anyway, and I'll be somewhere. But, so I'll be talking about sign ordinance, which, and I'll just tell what we have now versus, you know, what we're going to have going to the city council and let the questions come as they may.
I have a question on the mixed-use landscaping standard. Is that the same as for any commercial building, or was there an enhancement made? And I know I should have asked that question.
I think we need to specifically landscape within the plan unit development, because we don't really have a good working definition of what we mean by, I know in some other sections of the ordinance, we have, you know, X number of trees. I think VC offered requirements. But I think we need to spell out what we're talking about with the plan unit development. For example, if somebody has an existing grove of trees, that might be our preferred preservation, and we could state that. Where it's, you know, where it's maybe clear, that's where we need to kind of give a prescription for what we want to see in there. And it doesn't have to be linear, it could be kind of curvilinear, or, you know, it could be, it could be contoured. But, you know, I think we need to be more clear about what we're talking about there. The problem we ran in with landscaping with legacy is that we didn't really have a good definition. So, we had the situation where they could theoretically clear a bunch of mature trees and put in what amounted to, and are the brown trees, I don't know, small trees. So, that's what we need to address.
Yeah, because I have a concern, I mean, landscaping can really enhance the aesthetics, and I know that's, that's really, you know, strong market for, for potential buyers. And particularly when we're looking along, you know, our, our main corridor coming into town and either way, that, that presence is sort of somewhat...
I just think we need to do a good job of spelling out what we mean and that. There'll be lots to talk about, but I think we've got three ordinances where we only need two. So that's going to...
Anything else from me today? Thank you.
Wally spoke about the meeting in March, that'll be March the sixteenth. And then the meeting will be seven o'clock following that. Actually, we don't, so it'll just be a work session at six.
Okay, just work session?
Just work session.
Okay.
We have not heard, but I'll make a note to ask.
Okay, because I was wondering if it was going to be the meeting Monday. Hey, we usually go down the line here, Tom, so it looks like I'm on send-off with, if you have anything you'd like to say in closing?
Well, on this architectural review board, my understanding was that it's kind of, doesn't meet very often and doesn't have much, yet this is kind of detailed, requiring an architect, a lawyer, and an fireman, and several other people. Is this, why are we looking at this architectural review board?
Well, there's some past history there. As I'm in, and Dan may be a little bit closer to this than I am, because, but as I understand it, ten or fifteen years ago, there were some instances where the board was deemed to have made, got a little overboard in some of their, some of their recommendations to applicants. I know they had one case with Mr. Moses, Fountains about a building, that ended up going to the city, city council does have the ability to, but lately, I mean, it's really simmered down. I'm not aware of any problems that we've had in the last several years. In fact, most of the time, despite that, we've, we've come up with some guidelines that we're actually able to submit applications to the architectural review board members. And more often than not, they say, you know, it looks fine, we don't need to have a hearing, you know, things of that nature. Am I stating that right, Dan?
Right. Our initial members of the ARB, at least from what I've heard back in the early 2000s, were quite zealous in their opinions and led to some interesting architectural choices, as well as some, some of their opinions, which were eventually overturned by city council, most notably the Fountains of Picocen. But I can tell you, in recent years, they have mellowed out significantly. I believe the last ARB meeting was at least a year ago.
Yes.
For the former Georgia's Restaurant, now TJ's, which is nice shade of orange, which they approved. So it does not seem like there is any dramatic pressing need, but nonetheless, council brought it to our attention, so we are taking a look at it.
Okay, so this is really, there is a architectural review board that is chaired and boarded by these required people. It's just that they don't really meet very often and...
We have had two people drop off recently and we've not had replacements nominated yet.
Okay.
So, the question is, do we want to nominate people and keep it the ARB, or do we want to just delegate those responsibilities to the zoning administrator, who'd be the city manager here?
I think that's really the question I have.
Yeah, that's really, and that's really what it comes down to.
Is that, is that what this says? Because it looks like it's...
Well, currently, we have an architectural review board. That's our current...
Oh, okay.
And we do follow those. The current ARB does follow those.
Right, okay, because what I heard before was taking over, and this is very strict board.
Yes.
And that would be part of the work session that is held in March. So we will have more opportunity to discuss that.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, well...
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Libby?
I'm good.
All right, Lee?
I'm concerned about sea level rise and the impact of our town. And it's not a subject that we have just as a planning commission. It's so, at this point, I guess, what do we do? But we, if we, to honor our comprehensive plan, there were several sections where that was addressed. I don't know if it's under the purview of this commission to be discussing that or even considering it, or red flags of certain neighborhoods that are getting blue sky flooding much more frequently than in the past.
It is an element of our master infrastructure plan that a part of that does deal with sea level rise. So what I would say, and Dan, I don't know if you're specific, but, but I know there is a committee, engineering, that is addressing that, and the planning commission will have an opportunity to review that document, as will the city, when that comes. So, we're aware of it and we are, we are addressing it in the master infrastructure plan.
So the threats to our infrastructure, so roads and pump stations.
Yes, but, but ultimately, it all sort of goes back to sea level rise too, because obviously, that's going to put a big strain on what infrastructure we have and, you know...
I have, I have two things. The first is, I want to hearken back to something that Lee had brought up last meeting, and it really resonated with me, and I chewed on it for quite a while and, and thought about it. And she had brought up in the Village Commercial, the intent of that to have the landscape, the enhanced landscape and the sidewalks and the walkability. And I went back in the comprehensive plan and, and it did mention that, you know, walkability, park benches, landscaping sidewalks. And I don't know how much that's really being, I don't, I don't know if it's worth so much or really looked at when site plans are submitted. I don't know if we have any ordinances that help shape that. And we're talking about landscape as far as a plan unit development. I don't know if we also need to look at any ordinances with respect to Village Commercial to ensure that we have landscape and other features that are in line with the intent of the district.
Quick answer is that, yes, we do have better landscaping requirements in the B, doesn't mean they couldn't stand a little bit of improvement. The one VC development we have now, Village Commercial, would be, I was not here for Phase Two, it's like, I could see in Phase Two, we, we require things like walkability and, and, one of our big comments on Phase Three has to do with land. But without really looking more specifically at that site plan, I'm not sure I can give you the specific answer that you're looking for. You're certainly welcome, I mean, if you want to come by and look at the plans, you're certainly welcome to do that. You know, however, you know, we want to give you an answer, I guess is what I'm trying to say. And I'm aware that this is a very generalized answer I'm giving you, so...
And maybe something to bring up at the review of the zoning ordinance that we'd like to do, since, as far as I know, our standards for landscaping are very broad and vague right now.
Even in VC, although they're better to PUD.
And we do have some sidewalk ordinances related to VC or along the walkability lines. Okay, thank you. The other thing I would just like to mention is the renovation of the, the old Scorpio's Deli, the 185. I think that for being this little pocket of commercial within, the residential within the Eastern District, I think that fits in very nicely, being just this little pocket of commercial. I think, I think it really enhances Little Florida right there. So I think it's very nice. I think they did a great job and recognize the work that they've put into the building.
Wally, can you, when you speak?
I can, yes. I'm sorry, I keep forgetting. Yes, I've been pleased with how that looks as well.
And that's all that I have. Thank you.
Okay. If nobody else has anything, we're going to go ahead and adjourn.
Lenora, Garland.
The Norway?
Garland.
Garland.
Refresh the exterior.
Completely got it, the interior.
Like, we're supposed to have a ribbon cut.
I think I canceled.
Yeah, ring.